And like, is it twice as expensive? Is it a quarter week?
I don't know if I'd go twice as expensive, but it's more expensive.
Anybody else here? Yes. Giving everyone an opportunity. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
David Leon, Carton Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant. I would rely upon the papers that I submitted. Excuse me. The papers that I submitted that did note this is a facility that's going to be used once a week. With the amount... It's been calculated by the engineer, as indicated in my correspondence, of June 25th, 2021. The design is 1,500 gallons, so that the emerging wastewater will have an entire week suspended in carbon-rich septic effluent before being gradually released into the discharge field. This is not a residence that's being used on a daily basis. It's on a 17-acre plot of land, and what the amount of sewage that's generated is equivalent to a one-bedroom efficiency. It was... I respectfully submit... I submitted a transcript of the only pertinent part of the hearings, which were held on January 25th and on April 8th. And the only discussion was where it was... The nitrate system was raised by Mr. Gertner, and there was no affirmative representation by the applicant that they agreed to do it. Respectfully, it's not required outside of the Pinelands, and this is not a Pinelands area. We had an application for conditional use in the R3 zone, as indicated by Mr. Peters and Mr. Cle. We complied with all conditional use requirements. There was no variance relief, and I would submit that to put an additional condition is unduly burdensome upon a nonprofit conditional use church entity that has limited resources. It's been submitted to me by the engineer that the cost is more than 30% more to install it, in addition to significant additional maintenance costs of a nitrate system as opposed to a standard septic system. For those reasons, and relying upon my correspondence of June 25th, 2021, in conjunction with the transcript in which, again, there was no affirmative representation or agreement by the applicant to furnish that system, there was nothing in the design that indicated that it was going to be a nitrate system. I would respectfully request that the resolution be revised to take that requirement out and then a standard system be approved.
Yes, sir. This property is not fallible in the Pinelands area. So how did... Yeah, I have a question first, though. How did this then... I don't recall how this got in there with this requirement. If it's not in the Pinelands area, how did this happen?
Our attempt to be consistent throughout the board, zoning board has been requiring these nitrate systems for both commercial and residential properties, particularly in areas on the western side of the Pinelands. It both impact and harm for health and safety.
Okay? Yes?
I'm a little confused here. This was agreed to already. This is not...
We're now arguing.
But what is agreed to? What is agreed to? So it's not...
Respectfully, Ms. Campbell, I do not believe it was agreed to, and I submitted the transcript. As I indicated, I went through the entire YouTube recordings of the two meetings that we attended for this application, January 25th, April 8th, and the only references contained in the three-page transcript, which I submitted with my correspondence. It was... It's actually a two-page transcript plus certification. It was brought up by Mr. Gertner. The only representations were... It was not specifically discussed, Mr. Gertner. We will certainly take it under advisement and submit a supplemental submission with respect to that, if that's a requirement of the township, to which Mr. Gertner replied, "It's not, to be fair. It's not a specific requirement. I can tell you that the zoning board specifically has been requiring them more often, as Mr. Gertner just indicated. But it's not a specific requirement. It's not within the code. We didn't require any C variance relief." So I think that this board should consider that carefully in imposing additional requirements beyond those which are specified in the code, particularly where they're financially burdensome and they were not designed. So respectfully, I just fundamentally disagree that we agreed to that. There was no... There was no agreement to that.
Anyone?
Yes. I remember a lot of negotiations, and one of the ones I remember going back and forth, and your team seemed to be unwavering, and I'll use the word uncooperative, was adding additional fencing. We went round and round about plants, and we were discussing fencing for the neighbors. And you were uncooperative. Hold on now. So when I left, I believed we were settled. We had come up with some give and take and some compromises, and I feel that this is included in there, because I can tell you, as a member of this board, I was not well satisfied with the outcome of where the fences were. Your guys are screaming that we're going to build the best landscaping ever, and we went around and around about buffer. And I remember the no's coming from your side. And I'll tell you, I was astonished, but I said, "You know what? I'll take a step back in totality, and I'll look at the project objectively." And when I saw this today, I thought we were well settled. And, you know, I've had conversations with other attorneys, and I'll be surprised if you walked out of here and you didn't have in your mind where this was, that it was an open issue, that it was doubtful. I think it's a cost issue that's surprising, and I can respect that. But I think when we concluded here that evening, we were all settled. The fence issue was done, the landscaping issue was done, and this was done, and your project was blessed to move forward in good faith. That's where I think we are. That's where I think we were. The cost thing, I can tell you, I'm a retired construction manager. None of us here look at cost. It's not our job. But I think we had it well resolved. In my opinion, there may be others that differ.
Anybody else here?
Mr. Reicher, from environmental perspective, since with the environment there, what is your question?
We often face these projects where everybody wants something. This is a performance issue, and I know you're on 17 acres. We're looking at aquifers, and what could potentially get into aquifers in density? I don't see a reason why we can't have the best performance. If you're building a building that's, you know, modern, you know, your lighting, your solar, everything's coming in, the best it is at this particular date, time, juncture. You know, that being said, I disagree with you that it's, you know, the equivalent of an efficiency apartment. Right now, this house of worship is being used, contemplated uses, one day a week. I would hope and I would expect that 20 years from now, it would be five days a week, as I've seen it happen in the facility that I get. Okay? You're looking at it today. We're looking at it for 20 to 30 years. I am in favor, as the environmental commissioner for Jackson Township, and based on my experience that this was the best that we could come up with, and it was fair. Maybe it was not documented exactly to the T, but, you know, we're one group of people trying to move forward. So that's my opinion, is to move with it.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, this case law talks about the fact that the resolution itself speaks for the board, where the applicant would review the resolution and make its own notes, its own as individuals. The collective statement of the memorialized resolution had this as a requirement, much like as Mr. Reicher indicated, the perception that that was part of the total act. It certainly would then the applicant's right, makes an argument that, and it's true, I said it, said it, the reasons you want here, it's not specifically required, but we could have relied on that understanding on its... And it's within your... Within purview, applicant made some arguments, other than the specific requirements, particularly in this case, perhaps on the 17 acres, it's not required as is. You can make a limitation, actually. You know, for instance, one of the things they took off the table, you'll recall, when they reviewed, so perhaps if they come back then, they would... Well, they would have to come back to the board.
But then, delay.
No, no, if they wanted, if they added that use. So in other words, in an attempt, potentially, to create a compromise, certainly in further expansion, that board could articulate, maybe that would trigger the necessity of creating the system. I don't have... But it's the board's determination that this will reconsider or not.
If I may just touch, Mr. Chairman, just upon two things that Mr. Reicher mentioned, just respectfully, sir, with respect to the fencing issue that was raised for the first time at that meeting, and that's why there were notes being passed back and forth. It was a note that was presented to the board that was not presented to the applicant until the hearing was being conducted on April 8th. And that's why we were scrambling. And we had the arborist available. He testified remotely and said that one of the complaints of that particular neighbor to the north, I believe, was that they wanted to preserve the forested area, and that was the intent of the applicant. So I don't want to get into an argument over this, but just with respect, I don't want the board to think that we're trying to get over in terms of putting up privacy fencing. It was in lieu of putting up a fence, which would be more intrusive, which would actually take away foliage, the proposal was to put in more foliage. And there is language in the resolution with respects to the berms and the buffers, and there's specific agreement from the applicant to comply with the requirements of code officials and to create harmony with the neighbors. So with respect to that, that's one thing. The only other thing I'd like to address, and at that point I'd rest, is the issue of the resolution speaking for the board. And while I certainly respect that and understand that, there's a specific reference in that resolution which the applicant takes exception to, specifically that the applicant agreed to it. I'm not going to belabor that point. The transcript is what it is, and I'll represent to you as an officer of the court and someone who's appearing here on behalf of the applicant. That's the only representation to you. Differing minds can agree, but to me, I believe it's clear that there was no specific agreement to provide the nitrate system within that transcript. And with that, I thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chairman? If I may. I'll hand it to you this way, and I'll ask you a question. We receive a resolution from our secretary. We review it, X amount of us, and then we come here and it's voted. We then give it to you. Okay? I'm not certain of the exact date that you received it on behalf of your client, but I'm sure you read it. What is that timeframe window from when you received it to they figured out it costs more?
Momentarily, within the first day, Mr. Reicher.
They were relatively timed.
It was...
I'm asking. I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm not saying you're right.
I can't give you the exact date, but I can...
So it's within a reasonable window?
That's right. And the applicant, sort of in consultation, chose this avenue, which is not the usual, necessarily, to avoid the... Potentially avoid their necessity, potentially, of, you know, filing.
Okay. So I'll answer my final question. Other than this one item, is it fair to say that you have no other outstanding concerns? We're not going to see another deviance? You're not going to come back and tell us that, "Well, this site looks cheaper than that one, and this grass is better than this, and we can't get this specimen"? This would be it.
This is it, Mr. Reicher, with the sole exception of the ground sign, which it's my understanding, this board does not have jurisdiction over.
That's a whole other animal, and I agree with you. That's important, thank you.
But I just want to bring that to your attention. I don't want you to think that I'm...
I do agree with you on that.
But other than that, no, sir. That's the only exception that we took, other than some minor clerical clarifications, which have been addressed by Mr. Gertner to the satisfaction of the applicant, sir.
Any comments, questions, anybody?
Mr. Chairman? And I'm just kind of throwing it out. How about oversizing a standard system?
I'm sorry?
Oversizing a standard septic system?
Yes.
To make up for the enhanced treatment that you would get with the nitrate system?
And that's a compromise that you're offering up?
It's... Yes. Now, how much that system has to be oversized to match what you would get from the nitrate? I really don't know.
See, I guess the concern of the board is, you know, as Mr. Reicher stated, maybe not today, maybe not tomorrow, but, you know, five years, 10 years down the road, I'm sure there's going to be more things going on there and more usage, and we want to make sure that that's all covered as well.
I honestly don't know. I can tell you, Mr. Chairman, that the congregation has been in existence for over 100 years, and I don't know how much it's growing and whether there's actually going to be additional use. That's beyond... I can't make any representation that that is or is not accurate, that it's going to end up being used more often or grow in terms of the size of the congregation, in terms of providing a larger septic field. I do not have a cost benefit analysis right here. I certainly would consult with the engineer and the construction manager and see what their thoughts are. In terms of that, I can tell you, just, you know, from my basic understanding of it, the maintenance costs I would expect would be lower if you just oversized the field and with a standard field in lieu of a nitrate system. But in terms of the actual cost or what... How much bigger than a standard septic field it would have to be, I don't know that I'm not an engineer.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may just quickly. So we have... The board happens to have another meeting next week. I have no negativity in suggesting just carry your determination until next week, because if the compromise has worked out, it makes it much easier than having to make a decision, yes or no.
Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of state next week. I can probably have someone cover this, or if we can do it through submissions in writing, I'd be happy to, you know, accept the board's decision.
Yes. So I would presume, I'll say this out loud, that either you're going to be able to say yes to an oversized system or no. You've closed your argument, so the board would just, you know, and the vote would be on the record, if that's acceptable to the board, obviously.
Ms. Campbell, you?
I'm sorry. My concern is the future. Your pastor gave some wonderful vision, and I look forward to this. I followed that little church in Lakewood. It's just a wonderful community. We all know that things don't stay the same, and that churches often move from one denomination to another denomination, from one use to another use. And if in the future, this building, which is going to be a wonderful building from the plants and the grounds are beautiful, if that should change into a house of worship that we're going to be used on a daily basis, there would be problems with that field one way or the other, even an oversized field. So that's my concern, that things change.
Ms. Campbell, you raise an excellent point, because this church was originally in Lakewood. They sold the property in Lakewood. They moved to Jackson, and there's no guarantee that that might happen again down the road. So your point is well taken. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Whether to reincorporate, setting this new world of use, and all of that on purpose. When they come back or change the use, that they go there, they care, that's what we're doing, that they go to the food pantry, and when they come back before us or that, or then, what is the case?
Yeah. I... So you're hitting what I talked about. I think the... Respectfully, I think the best approach is, and to some extent, you guys are quasi-judicial, so we're always talking about litigation. Judges never like to make decisions if the parties can settle. I think the best approach in this particular case is to ascertain whether or not the compromise of the oversized system out of the box, so to speak, is acceptable. And I think also listening to the board, so it's no surprise to you whether you can be here or associate can be here or not, I think that if the board... If you were to... If your client were to agree to the oversized system and the board were to agree to the oversized system, what I'm hearing, and again, the board hasn't even voted yet, is that the board would also condition that removal on some language in the removal resolution that would allow for... To put you on notice that as the use intensifies, there would be a continuing need to review the system. And you...
Even with?
Even with an oversized. Well, to review it, because out of the box, you know, the first change may not, if they go with the oversized system, the engineers will talk, and they still don't need it. I think the overall concern of the board, Ms. Leon, is this. One, and most important, has nothing to do with consistency and the like. It has the fact that so much of this municipality relies on well water. There's a history in the municipality of difficulties with the well-water systems here. And I'll have to just... Legler's the easy one. There's others. There's a long history. And the feeling has been, not with, you know, notwithstanding the state, that intense uses, both from density from a residential perspective or houses of worship, other intensified uses, at this point, when those uses are also on wells, the boards, plural, have asked the applicants to abide by the health and safety of the residents and their own congregants, their own residents, to utilize these systems. Our engineer talks about a compromise, you know, take the board's conversation under advisement, and we'll get an answer Thursday or Friday, so you can not be here. So at least you'll know your answer, and then the board will act on Monday, if that's acceptable to the board.
How's everybody feel about that?
Okay? All right.
Okay. Do we need to go?
Nope, nope, because you're carrying your final deliberation to find out if they reach a settlement.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time.
Very much, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Lot 19501, Lot 35, Solomon's Old Investments. Good evening, gentlemen. Have a seat. And Mr. Cle, would you like to lead off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application for major subdivision approval. The applicant's proposing to establish 20 single-family residential building lots and one multifamily lot involving four affordable dwelling units on the subject property. We had had testimony back in May, May 3rd, and the affordable lot was at the corner of the New roadway in Grotown. And through the deliberations of the board, it felt that it would be probably better if this affordable lot with the four units were put in internal to the subdivision design. We did receive revised plans indicating that adjustment, the affordable lots are inside the subdivision development. We received these plans on Wednesday, and we didn't have an opportunity to provide a report, but long and the short of it, that's is the revision.
Okay. Mr. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The application's still located in the RG2 regional growth zone. It's still a permitted conditional use. They're still before the right board, and everything that Doug said.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and this is no surprise, but just to follow up on Mr. Cle's comments, you know, based on the receipt of the new information on Wednesday, I had a discussion with Mr. Pfeffer, so this is not a surprise. Given the board's schedule, it was felt not to adjourn, you know, proper to adjourn the matter. The applicant will go as far as the board is comfortable through our professionals to determine, but the applicant is aware of the possibility that the board may need further information from the written information from our professionals to be able to properly deliberate, having just received those plans on Wednesday.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, on behalf of the applicant. As Mr. Gertner indicated, we did have that conversation earlier, and I had said, I hope... I'm hopeful that this evening, we're going to be able to provide as much testimony that both the board and the professionals have. I do point out, at the last hearing, as your professionals raised, the concern was over the location... The main concern was over the location of the affordable housing unit. Originally, it was at the front. I know a handout was given, just so everyone has it in front of them. It was at the front, that little corner lot, Lot 1, and the board had some concern, rightfully so, about the extra parking, the extra cars pulling out right by the corner. I believe it was a recommendation, I don't remember if it was of the professionals or one of the board members, indicated they thought that there was an oversized lot over in Lot 11, the back corner, that the board thought that would be a better location for the affordable housing, as it was kind of tucked away in the back with some excess land for the parking lot and for room for cars to pull out. Additionally, there was some conversation at the last hearing regarding where could we place some kind of a swing set or something for that affordable housing unit. And while it's not depicted on the map, as you can see to the, I'll say, the right of the parking lot, there is sufficient room to put a little play area or something for the affordable housing units, as the single families have sufficient room for their own play sets. So I believe that lot is appropriate, and we'll hear the testimony in a moment from Mr. Borden. That, and there were a few other, what I'll call minor comments and questions that Mr. Borden's here to testify to, along with Mr. Ray for traffic. I completely understand if the board still has more questions after we put that on, but I would hopeful... I'm hopeful that we can address those concerns and complete this evening. With that, Mr. Gertner, I wish if Mr. Borden is still sworn in, if you want to have him resworn.
I'd like to do it again.
Same price.
Yep. Mr. Borden, you raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm the information, testimony, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You've been qualified, but can you give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation?
Certainly. Ian Borden, President of Professional Design Services, Lakewood, New Jersey.
And you've been qualified previously on this application as a planner?
That's correct. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, I think Adam summed up. I have left me very little to say, which is a good thing. Basically, we moved the affordable unit. We provided four exhibits. Anthony, I see, has pulled it up on the screen, it looks like. Oh, that's not it. That's our subdivision set. But the four exhibits were A1, which is the development plan that we had presented at the May hearing. As noted by Mr. Pfeffer, we had relocated, and then we have A2, which is revised development plan, relocating the affordable unit from Lot 1 to Lot 11. We also had taken the parking, which was basically a very wide driveway on the road, to a parking, an off-street parking area, complying, a number of spaces complying with residential site improvement standards. And the other item that we... Well, we addressed the technical items on the plans that raised by the board engineer and planner, which, understand, they have not had a chance to review yet. But the other item that we addressed was there was a question of parking in the houses. So we... And since we had our hearing in May, there had been a memo generated by the New Jersey State DCA regarding interpretation of residential site improvement standards on parking for single-family homes. Simply, we anticipated that that would be raised, so we addressed it ahead of time, and we show graphically and in a table on A2, the parking, three parking spaces for a... show graphically and in a table on A2, the parking, three parking spaces for each home, which is sufficient for a five- or six-bedroom house, according, in accordance with that memo. The memo basically says you need one-half parking space per bedroom. That is, that didn't change the design of the project at all. We had always provided a, a garage, a one-car garage with a two-car driveway. And then lastly, on A3 and A4, are color renderings of the affordable building. The first, A3, is the view from the new parking area, looking at the front of the building, with the two entries into the, or the four entries into each of the four units. And then the A4 is the view from the road, looking at the side of the house. Yes, and that's on the screen. Thank you, Anthony. That's basically it.
Is that the end of your testimony?
That's basically it.
Okay. Mr. Borden.
No, Adam just asked me to walk through the technical items. I don't feel necessary to do that unless the board wishes me to, but basically, there were various, what I would consider small technical comments, particularly in the remedy of vernacular view and landscaping and things like that. And we just, we just addressed those items while we were making this change. That's, that's all.
Mr. Borden, for, for the record, were any of those technical questions or requirements of the, of the board professionals, were you unable to agree with any of those comments? Or were you basically able to provide and indicate what they were asking?
Yeah, we don't disagree with any of the comments. As I testified in May, we agreed to comply with all of the comments. We endeavored to do so in this submitted. If we didn't, we certainly will do so as a condition of any approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Borden.
I'm sorry, the which did?
I think it's four on each side.
Yes.
Yeah, the, the, if you look, I know, it's small, but it's just four on, on the left and four on the right.
Yes. Yeah, we didn't reduce the number of parking spaces. We just took them off the road.
As far as aesthetics, it's a nice rendering. Will it, is it fitting in with the homes that will be driven by, as you get to that, it will not look terribly different?
Correct. As, as required by the UHAC rules, the state UHAC rules, it will be aesthetically similar to all the other houses in the project.
I'm still having a problem with, like, Mr. planning with the parking. It's showing, I think, four or six spaces. It's not showing eight. No, we're near it.
I believe the, the bigger copy, but.
On A2.
I understand what you're, what you're looking at. Testimony is, is eight spots. We comply with eight spots.
Because that's an awful tight turn into a spot on the street, isn't it?
Yes, that's the, that's the danger of having a reduced copy. There are eight, there's four spaces on each side.
Because if your large containers are behind it, and the property lot line seems to be very close to that, I don't see how that's going to be eight spaces.
Well, that's what we're, we're, that's what we're required to provide, and that's what we will provide.
Okay.
And as noted, we also provided the refuse and recycling enclosure. That was something that was requested as well. And that will be done by a private quarter.
And these parking spaces are going to be in accordance to whatever law there is with sizes of parking.
Of course. They, they comply fully with the, with the parking design standards, nine-foot wide spaces, 18-foot deep, 24-foot center aisle width for a two-lane drive, complies with the dimensional requirements of parking and access.
The plan says eight, but you say nine.
No, he said.
No.
I'm sorry. It, it's, they're nine feet wide. It's hard to, I, I thought the same thing, Jeff. It's written sideways, so, the number.
There are eight spaces, nine feet wide.
Exactly. They're nine feet wide.
This is a much better location.
We think so as well.
Everybody agrees.
We all agree.
And if we get, if the board wants to hear Mr. Ray's traffic testimony, he's also going to agree that this is a better location.
And the playground will be, is added, I'm trying.
Yes.
Said it is, but I want to make sure it's not.
We agree, as, if the board does vote to approve it, as a condition of approval, the exact location will be somewhere on that lot. It wasn't depicted, it's just what we're indicating.
Probably to the right of the park.
Correct.
Correct.
And there'll be a sidewalk.
A sidewalk around the entire, the entire.
To get to the parking lot.
Yes.
I mean, to get to the top lot.
Yes.
That's correct.
Now, I see that you guys, very astute of you to include the parking on the, on the individual houses. And again, the width of the driveways and the length of the driveways, can we get that? And is that in accordance with the parking laws?
Yes, the width of the driveway is 20 feet, which is required for a two-space driveway, and the driveways have a minimum length of a 25 feet. 25 feet measured from the property line. So the actual distance to, to the road will be 35 feet.
The landscape plan shows palms. What's the density?
Sure.
Yeah, it shows palm trees.
That's, I, I, I say this, I should say this reluctantly, but I don't. I'm unfiltered. I think somebody in my office is playing games with me.
I was curious about the density, you know? Yeah. They launched a break here.
Yeah, we have, yeah, the red maple and the scarlet oaks for, for trees.
Ian, it's all good. Just a little bit. All right. Gentlemen, do you have any further comments, comments, anything?
Would you take a look at the plans?
Okay. So, so I guess we can't take any action this evening for, to vote on this due to these guys having to review these things. So, but I think we could go ahead and open this up to residents' comments.
Yes, but before we get to that, again, I just want to make sure we're clear. I have Mr. Ray here for testimony. If the board has any questions, we were, I'm just going to have him sworn in, just to basically indicate that this is a better location for traffic. If the board would like to hear it on the record, I'll have him. If not, I think everyone agrees it's a better location.
For the record?
Yeah, it, it'll be quick, and then we can open to the public. I just.
Mr. Ray, thank you. You've been previously qualified on this application as well.
I believe so, yes.
So, do you solemnly swear affirm information, questions, comments, or testimony? You're about to present before the board. We'll represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Mr. Ray, you had testified last meeting as to the traffic report for this project. As indicated, we've moved the location of the affordable housing unit. Can you please just tell us your professional opinion on this?
No, it's, it's a better location. I think it was a good suggestion from the board. Mr. Borden and I went back. We looked at it a second time, and the new location, internal to the site, will have the parking spaces backing up into the local roadway, not close to where the entrance is from Grotown Road. It's a much better location. And we thank the board and the board's experts for their suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ray, hang on. You're not, you're not through the chairman. So, Mr. Ray, as a traffic expert, are you satisfied that for five- and six-bedroom homes, the provision of three off-street parking is sufficient?
Well, that's what the RSIS, that's what the interpretation from the DCA is with respect to the number. So I, we have to defer to them. They're, they're in charge of the standards. So that's all I can say, Mr. Gertner. Yes.
So, for the benefit of this board, I don't think that, that the memo that we're referring to hasn't been before the board. Can you briefly describe it?
If I can, Mr. Gertner, only because it was the zoning board's professional who reached out for it, I think it would be more appropriate if it came from, from you to the board than having this professional provide memo that was provided to us, to regurgitate, with all due respect.
Unfortunately, I don't have the witness.
I think Mr. Miskovich, who represents the zoning board, may have a copy of it. But I know the requirement now from the DCA is three spaces for homes of this size.
For five to six bedrooms?
Yeah.
I take no, I can make, as an officer of the court, make no, I have no issue with that representation.
And can that be held, though, that's?
Well, we'll, we'll get the.
We have to be back anyway, that's right. So we'll look for that.
Okay.
Mr. Gertner, I, you're saying six-bedroom homes. I, I don't recall there being any specification of six bedrooms. Says off-street parking's five to six, it's right on the plan.
Mr. Chairman, I think if I can clarify, since this, this recommendation from the DCA, this guidance, I'll call it, that came up at the zoning board, we've kind of backed into it, meaning we're kind of, I don't want to say, cornered here to the side of the house. But based upon that recommendation from the DCA, we can provide here with the one-car garage and the two onsite spots, we could fit a five-slash-six-bedroom house here. Meaning, if these were seven-bedroom houses, we would need to provide you more parking. And on this, on this application, there really is not much room for additional parking.
But don't I remember when we did this before, that we agreed that the garage would remain a garage?
It's a garage. Now, I don't, I remember every saying that there was going to be at least one car garage, which there is.
The garage must remain a garage. That, I believe, was part of our requirement.
Yeah, but if I may, through the chair, one of the discussions, based at least on my notes, was that, that there was some talk about, we all know how sometimes garages morph into storage. And if you're relying on the garage for a parking space, I believe that's where Dr. Campbell's coming from, that it needs to maintain itself as a, as a, as a garage.
How do you, um, do you?
You can't, really, but.
You can't, but I have occasion to drive visiting a neighborhood in Jackson where all the garage's doors have been removed and replaced with walls.
So that, that require a building permit and a zoning, you have to first go to the zoning officer. People could do things that are, that are illegal. I, I can't control.
Just to answer the point, not, not to belabor, it's really through, through design, which is really what a point is. You can't, ultimately, if you pack it head to toe, there's no way to, to double-check that.
I just want to make sure there's a garage door.
That, that is our plan. That's where our testimony has been, and we have not changed that.
Anybody?
I would tend to think you can't legislate with the garage as used for based on money. It's on lots of wonderful lawn, lawn equipment. However, but to go with Dr. Campbell, it's designed as a, as a garage. Its performance is great, whether you put a pool table in or whatever, go for it. But I do think we should put into the resolution that it stays a garage, so that when the building permit comes in, and they go to zoning, they go back and look at the rest, sir, your original bargain was a garage, whether it was a pool table, lawn equipment, or.
We, we have no objection to that, and, and as indicated previously, that it is a house with a minimum one-car garage.
Design, performance.
Yes.
Be met, and we would not, the actual use.
And just to rehash, do they all have basements?
Yes. Except for the affordable housing, which I believe is just on the slab.
And they're walkout basements, is that?
Not on this site. No, that is not.
This, this site does not have any walkout basements.
Is that in the exterior entrance to the basement?
Well, I, let me make sure we're, we're talking about the same thing. And a, a walkout basement in, in our def, my definition, the way we utilize them, is a house where the grade level at the rear of the basement is equivalent to the basement floor.
Okay, so maybe I misstated. I'm referring to exterior access to the basements. Is there going to be?
That I, I do not know.
Doors or whatever?
That, that is a function of the architectural design and the, the individual design and sale of the home.
Do you have those designs?
I'm sorry?
And do you have those?
No. No, because that's, that's to be designed by the individual purchasing the home.
So can I ask a question along those lines, if I may, Mr. Chairman? If the argument were making sure that the affordable units through UHAC conform with the designs, how do you enforce that if you have no control over the custom designs of the individual homes? Excellent question.
I, I think that's, that's a review of the zoning and planning, planning, I'm sorry, the zoning office and the building department. When the affordable unit is designed, by the time the affordable unit is submitted, there will be homes designed, certainly, and at least under construction, if not completed, but those elevations will be known at that time.
That seems to leave a lot of loose ends.
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about a, a new development close to where I live. There are no homes with siding. They're, they're all homes with brick, stone, and stucco. So how are you going to assure that this doesn't stick out like a sore thumb with just siding on it, when everything around it is brick, stone, and stucco?
If that were to the design of the homes, then this should, should mimic that in aesthetic appearance.
So who is going to make sure that happens?
That, in my opinion, would be the zoning officer. For example, and I'll give you one example, it's kind of the opposite, contrary to this, but the township, for example, has a look-alike ordinance. In other words, homes that are next to each other or across streets from each other can't be identical. We've, haven't dealt with that in a number of years, but, but we have in the past, where you, where you're building homes for a developer, and he has, say, three different models. You can't build the same model side by side. I've, I've done that exercise in town, where we've identified which lots can have which models. This is simply analogous, in my opinion, to that exercise in a different way. Rather than making sure they don't look alike, you're making sure that the affordable housing is alike, the.
That's not true. That she's saying it made in the same style.
Yes.
Correct. I understand. I understand.
I would think that's the architect's problem, not the, zoning board may have to.
Well, certainly.
Zoners may have to, but it's the, it's the architect that, who has to assure that after three or four, or whatever percentage homes are built, that then, as, as the designs become obvious in the area, that these affordable units don't look less than, don't deviate.
Yeah, I understand. I, of course, and I fully agree with that. I, I was answering what I thought the question was, which is how is it regulated? Certainly, the design would come from the architect doing the design of the homes in the community, whether it's multiple architects, as I assume it might be, but whoever's doing the design of the affordable, it's incumbent upon them to, to match the, as you say, the textures and styles of the other homes.
So may I make, I cannot remember, is this board, different, different place? What I would respectfully suggest, perhaps, is, talk about textures, colors, and the like. Can you at least get a palette and together, so that, because that's an awful lot of discretion to the zoning officer, to determine architecturally whether, whether the design is UHAC compliant.
I understand. I, I believe that the proper approach would be to have a condition on the approval, requiring, that the, a condition on the approval, requiring that the architectural design of the affordable unit follow the aesthetics, texture, and color of the market units.
But, but, yeah, but the problem is, you just testified that those are custom. So you have no control over those.
But by the time the affordable unit is designed, those, those custom details, those, those styles and colors, I understand, but.
When a neighborhood usually has a personality, and even if it's three or four or five architects, they'll be stone, or, or it's stucco, or whatever, you will have a sense of it. I just don't want to see the affordable unit have a, an aluminum siding, when, for instance, some of the new neighborhoods off Cooks Bridge are all stone, stucco. when, for instance, some of the new neighborhoods off Cooks Bridge are all stone, stucco, and not siding.
I completely agree, and I think that's-
And I think the ordinance calls for, meaning if, not so much the color, but if there are a blend of stucco and stone houses, to have this one be siding, that would not comply with the ordinance.
Thank you.
Mr. Flot?
I don't know what we have to have, we don't even know what we're going to have, we've got a settlement, we've got a settlement. We need to hear, we've got people watching, we're trying to have input, and we've got no knowledge about it all. I think we're going way too far, while we can control.
So if I may push back slightly, it's not really the board, it's the applicant's obligation, because they've chosen to, to present a development utilizing, in this zone, utilizing the opportunity to provide affordable housing as a method to come before you, and part of the consideration of the entirety of the zone is this design element so that these affordable units don't, not being brought with purpose, not disrespectful, but that, so the affordable units do blend and don't stick out like a sore thumb. So the fact is that there's, that I believe the board heard some incongruous testimony, think that they did indicate that the, while the developer may continue this, that the homes are going to be custom, which means there's no design element, there's no palette, there's no, there's nothing that you would see in a large tract, and it is this, I believe, based on my understanding of the affordable housing, regulations, the law, and the ordinance as it sits, that there's an obligation from a design and aesthetic perspective to ensure that these, that these affordable units are not, and again, I'm being overly negative to make, to drive home the point, and not just simply slap together.
But that's very hard to, it's hard to, you don't have to adapt, you only use a lot.
Right, and I think that's the, the idea for the ordinance, in that it has to be the same style and material so that it's, so it could blend to whatever extent it could blend in, I agree with the-
Yeah, but that-
But if the overall-
Yes, sir. How do you define the word custom? What does that mean, when you say that it's going to be a custom home, what does that mean?
As far as the design, the look, the colors, the layout, layout. It could be anything, somebody, somebody may want, may want only a two-bedroom house, or a three-bedroom house, some may want the kitchen larger, some may want the kitchen smaller. Yes, they just can't exceed the five or six-bedroom condition due to parking. That's, that's locked in, and the one-car garage, so someone could not come and tell you, I'm going to build a 10-bedroom house with no garage. That is not what's, what's being before this board, or submitted before this board.
Why don't we try this? Okay, so in a general statement, if the houses have dormers, we put a fake dormer on this one. My, my, my thing is seen, seen a lot is, you know, from Plainsboro and other places, real simple. Dorable finish, four foot up, stack stone, fitted stone, brick face. The rest, I mean, on the other side, since it's going to be, in a portable, it's going to take some wear and tear, use a dorm product, not, not driver, you know, ephes on a, on a, on a side where it's going to take a beating with a weed whacker, and then just a simple down and dirty landscape plan. And I think that, that's it, I mean, you know, you can't reinvent the wheel, you're not going to put Anderson Woods in this thing, you know? It's got to, it just has to look pretty, so if we have dormers in a development, it gets fake dormers. I mean, you can't do much more with it.
I agree.
You know, but I'm more concerned about it being durable for just use and abuse. And, you know, because it's not, it's not a separate home for a homeowner, it's going to need some kind of landscape treatment, whatever, so a simple down, dirty plan, because it's going to get maintained by, I guess, an association.
Yeah, the management company of that lot.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that's it, I mean, there's, there's nothing more, in my opinion.
Mr. Rucker, I, I agree with you, it's, it's not about nothing more, it's about not sticking out. It's going to stick out, so we know it's going to stay out. Fortunately, where it is, it's not going to stick out as much, but it's making it look as if it belongs there, not as if it's been plopped there as an afterthought. That's our goal.
I, I agree, you know, so like, I use the dormer example, I don't know whether there are treatments-
That we won't know until they start building those homes. And, and as I say, around the corner from me, there's a whole new development, very similar to this, what it looks like this is going to be with five, six-bedroom homes. Every home is different, some are colonial, some are modern, some are, there are no Victorians in there, you know, but that, that's the model that most people are working with today. Thank you.
Anybody? All right, so we've determined that the parking for these lots is hinged on how many bedrooms there are, right? So you have, you're saying three, three parking spots, or you can't have more than six bedrooms, is that?
Correct.
So down the road, if somebody wants to add additional bedrooms, they're not able to, because we don't have adequate parking.
Unless somebody would design a smaller house with more bedrooms, and they can comply with the parking.
Okay, well, we don't have any control over that.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I think what may assist is, we will pass along this DCA memo, which has this, has the count, which will help illustrate for the board what occurs, what is necessary with each bedroom. But ultimately, it's their argument that they have to, that the footprint has to meet all requirements. Can't go over building coverage, can't go over pervious coverage, so if they design setbacks, et cetera, so that they have a box where the house can be, based on the design and the guarantee of at least one, one, a one-car garage, they can have up to six bedrooms based on this box. As they indicated, if you added a, just for argument's sake, if you added a seventh bedroom, they'd have to design it so that they could add a fourth space.
Okay. And, and Mr. Cle, you're absolutely positive that the, the number of affordable units here has adequate parking with the eight spaces? All right, if nobody has any other comments, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Can I get a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Come on up.
Benning from 22 Abercorn Court.
Thank you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm, information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you just spell your last name, I know we probably got it, but just in case.
B-A-N-N-O-N.
And your address again?
It's 22 Abercorn Court. I want to take the worst-case scenario. All 21 of the homes decide they want to build out to this-
Hold on a second, gentleman in the back, gentleman. We're recording here, I need, I need quiet.
Worst-case scenario, all 21 homes decide to opt for the six-bedroom option. Where is the excess parking, and where is the overflow parking going to be? We can't have what goes on Cooks Bridge Road happening here. The over, all the overflow parking is ending up on Cooks Bridge Road, and we don't want that happening here. So that's something I want to take effect.
So, again, I guess Mr. Boarden could confirm, but this meets the RSIS, the residential standards for houses. And like I said, it was this extra, if we had more bedrooms, we'd have to provide more parking. If we don't, we're showing here six-bedroom, five or six-bedroom houses with the one, with the one-car garage and two onsite. That's what's required by, by RSIS standards, and we've provided.
The overflow parking.
We, we have enough parking on the lots to satisfy the bedroom requirement, which includes resident and guest. There is overflow guest parking on the streets, because we have 30-foot wide streets, which under RSIS standards allows parking on both sides.
Okay, and Mr. Fleming, does that give adequate for fire trucks here? Raise, you know, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Just making sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public here, wishing to comment on this? No, do we, do we have anyone online?
Not, 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 no more on, no, we're streaming.
We're celebrating, we're getting together for the first time, and it's like so new.
Just checking. All right, last call, anyone? No? We have a move to close?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, okay. So going forward, these gentlemen have documents to review and to comment on. So what are we going to do with timing?
We'd like to be back, with the respect of the board, the next available meeting is, hopefully, we've complied with everything to the professionals, if they confirm, I mean, we have no more testimony.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I guess, I mean, if I may?
Sure.
Ask just Mr. Cle and Mr. Peters, 10 days would make you be available?
As far as review going for board's consideration, it's sure not going to happen for the special we're having on the, next Monday. The, the second has three items. I'm leaning towards the 16th of August. The applications that are on that meeting aren't really that, you know, complicated, so that might be, you know, give us time to do the, do the reports, and it seems that it might be available for the, for the 16th. I would just, I would just ask that, based on what we're talking about tonight, obviously, the, the parking dimensions somehow are off, that it's really only, it shows six, it really should show eight, so I think those, you know, revised plans to correct that discrepancy, you know, we need them as, as soon as possible. And also, I think part of the discussion today was about landscaping on that affordable house, or on that affordable lot. The plans that were submitted show me some street trees in front, but no landscaping. So as quickly as they can turn around the plan that corrects those two inconsistencies, the quicker we can, you know, provide the report.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, for an enforcement perspective, if they're doing that, the landscaping, I would ask Mr. Boarden if it's possible through the chair to add at least the dimensions of that top, the park.
And, yeah, show it on the plan.
And the, and the connection.
But, you know, I'm, I'm saying it'd be up to, up to the board, the 16th appears like it would be, you know, you know, adequate time, but if I get those plans, you know, tomorrow or the next day, don't give them to me next week expecting to be on for the 16th.
And I don't know if this is possible, but I am uncomfortable with the top lot being on the other side of the parking lot. I envision kids then going through the parking lot to get to the top lot, and even with a sidewalk in the front there, you know, you're, you're having kids walk past where, where traffic could be going. So I don't know if something can be worked out.
We, we could take a look at it, if not, maybe also maybe add some fencing, so you'd walk on the sidewalk and then get into the enclosed area for the park, I think, to, to close off the parking lot to the, to the top lot.
So, I don't know.
We'll look into that.
Somebody else has?
Or reverse them.
Yeah, reverse them, whatever.
We'll take a look at that, which, which, which works best.
Everybody okay? All right, we'll see you on the 16th, August 16th?
Just ask that the notice-
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, this matter will be carried to the August 16, 2021 meeting without the requirement of further notice. The applicant has waived time, and we appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. All right. You're welcome. Oh, all right, we're going to take a five-minute break. All right, we're back in session. Okay, we have block 8601, lot 41 through 28, north Cooks Bridge Road LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I will trial for you on behalf of the applicant, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application for preliminary and final major site plan approval associated with the construction of a professional office building. We heard of some initial testimony on May 3rd. I think the board related or expressed a concern that the building might have been a little bit too big. Originally, it was at 10,000 square feet, and now it's down to 7,845 square feet. They've reconfigured the front parking area. There is still a design exception for the number of parking. 40 spaces are required, and 35 spaces are provided. Report indicated the need for architectural drawings, which were submitted to the, to the board last Wednesday. But that's, pretty much summarizes the, the modifications to the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Project's still located in the NC neighborhood commercial zone, it's still a permitted use, and everything else Doug said, thank you.
Thank, thank you, everyone. We do know that the architectural plans were submitted outside the, inside the 10-day period. The engineering plans are consistent with the architect's, but you, the board professionals' reports only reviewed the engineering plans, not the architectural renderings. So we'll defer to the board on how you want to handle that as we go forward. And Mr. Gertner did call me to give me a heads-up that the board may or may not want to act on it based on that.
Yeah, listen, we need to, time to review this.
Understood, but our testimony is going to be very brief, because we did cover all of our testimony at the last hearing in March. Mr. Ray testified in, in support of the parking variance relief, which is less, we have fewer parking spaces required, and we provided fewer parking spaces as well because of the reconfiguration of the site. Mr. Halpert, our engineer, is going to summarize for you what the changes were. We are prepared to address all the technical comments within your board professional reports, which we have. Doug's is July 13th, and Ernie's is July 7th, we have no issues with the technical comments. So we're really here to summarize the changes and get your input, input as to whether we've achieved what the board relayed to us at the last hearing. You stand up, and you're going to be sworn in.
Sir, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your-
I do.
Full name, spell your last, and your affiliation. You testified before, so your qualifications were accepted, correct?
Eric Halpert. First name is spelled E-R-I-C, last name is H-A-L-P, as in Peter, E-R-T. I prepared the plans, a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I have given testimony before regarding this plan.
Thank you. Anthony, could you put up the most recent engineering submission? Do you have? Oh, what's the last revision date? It's a-
He could put, site plan exhibits. Site plan exhibits.
Drawings are dated July 2nd, last revision, July, June 29th.
There's a drawing titled Site Plan Exhibits. This is the same as the site plan that was submitted, except a Google Street View was placed on the, on the plan just for an exhibit.
All right, would you summarize for the board the changes made since the March hearing, please?
The previous plans indicated professional offices with gross square footage totaling 10,000 square feet, and parking spaces in the front, 46 parking spaces. The present plans that the board members are looking at is showing an approximately 8,000 square foot, 7,845 square foot gross square footage building.
What's the size again? I apologize.
Seven, eight.
7,845 square foot building. The parking in the front has been reduced also. The previous plans had variances on either side. There was a variance to the residential side, and there was a variance to the commercial side. Those variances are now taken away. The parking is now conforming to the ordinance.
Not the setbacks or...
The setbacks. The setbacks of the, the parking setbacks are conforming to the ordinance. There is 35 spaces presently. Fire lanes are being shown. The refuse enclosure has been pushed farther back, and is not in conflict with the entrance on the southern side of the building. And that would be the main, the main differences between the previously submitted site plan and the, the present site plan as submitted.
And you heard me say at the beginning of, at my introduction, that there were various technical comments relating to landscaping, lighting, drainage, et cetera, in the two professional reports. And I indicated that we would address all of those comments. And you may have in, in the plan revisions, but you will agree as a condition of approval to address them.
Yes.
The only other question was, I know the board asked if we would consider moving the building up and providing parking to the rear. And I, I believe you did make a submission to show why that would not be feasible.
The board had requested an exhibit, a concept plan, showing a building in the center, where in a way that traffic could circulate around the building. And as an exhibit, we do have, are you able to pull up the exhibit? There is a, 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 a plan, concept plan exhibits? No, concept plan exhibit. This is just an exhibit the board had wanted to see. This is purely a layout just to illustrate what, what it would look like if we would...
Let's mark that, that particular...
I'm sorry?
We should mark that specifically.
Right. And your, your board professionals haven't been given that, so they would obviously have to look at that before the next meeting, whenever that is.
Okay.
I don't believe they were. I, I didn't submit it, so Mr. Halpert submitted.
The, 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 the understand, I was under the understanding that the board had wanted to see an exhibit, a concept plan.
I guess the first question, just when was that submitted to, to the board secretary? That we have?
This was sent to the board secretary on Friday as an exhibit. The intent was not to have it specifically reviewed by the board professionals.
We left off at the last meeting at A4. I don't know if we've marked anything.
This is A5. The, the issue is, you're talking about something that, it's throwing, I'll speak for myself. It's throwing me off, because you have an exhibit, you have an exhibit that went to the board secretary, I guess, that's, so we have it electronically, but I don't think a single one of the board members have seen it. While we understand your professional point, that it's a concept plan that you don't agree with, you, you don't think it makes sense, and you're going to testify to it, there's no, to send something on Friday, to talk about it on Monday without anyone else being able to see it, throws, I think...
I understand.
Same thing, well, I'm going the same thing, just to make sure I'm not looking for something different, on behalf of the board. So we have, I, we do have in front of us the submission dated the 19th, which are the MF Design Studio revisions. Is, are those the architecturals you're talking about?
Yes.
So there no, there's no renderings or anything?
No, there were no renderings. This was meant to be only an, an exhibit. Yes. That, that's why it was sent only Friday to show right now, just to, to discuss. This was meant for discussion.
All right, well, it's marked A5. You'll discuss it to the best of your ability, I guess.
The, this is, the site, again, as the site is going to require onsite septic, so the back of the property, the rear of the property is going to have to, have space for the septic field. And in order to, on a property like this, where there's a little less than 140 feet from property line to property line, from south to north, they're only, if we're going to put the building in the middle, we only are going to be able to achieve one, one stack of parking along, along the longer side. And then we'll be able to get some parking in the rear, some parking in the front. But on a property like this, the development, we're, the way to develop it more appropriately would be to, would be the way we have submitted plans. And by pushing the building in the middle, we are limiting the amount of spaces that we could achieve. And that's what this is meant to illustrate, because the building is going to take away from the ability to have more than one stack of, of parking spaces.
And that's all we have really for tonight. We, we understand the board members need, and the professionals need to review the architectural plans. We'll, we'll review this if they have comments, professionals. And we're going to request that you, after, after you give us your input on the plans submitted, that were reviewed by your professionals, that you open to the public, and we see if there's any other comments.
Mr. Campbell?
I'm trying to re-familiarize myself with this project. And I live there, and I live right in that area. So I'm very familiar with the facilities that are there. Is there an issue with tying into the sewer?
Yes, we, we wrote, we, I emailed Mr. Harpel at the MUA right after the last meeting, and he advised us that there is not sewer near here to, to connect. I'm looking for his email. I had it out before, and then my papers fell. So bear with me a sec, please.
I'm surprised to hear that, because, as I say, I live right in that area. I know there sewer hookups.
Here, water and sewer are actually not yet in North Cooks Bridge, but both utilities are close to the site on Bennett's Mills. We do have plans to extend water main from Bennett Mills to the Fountainhead Mobile Home Park in a few years, but your project would require a water main extension. So there's nothing in front. It's, it's...
So you need a water main extension?
For water. And for sewer, it's not at the site. So we would have to try and get it from somewhere. And it's, it's not cost effective to bring sewer to a site, a small project like this, where you're going to have a major infrastructure improvements to bring sewer.
How about changing over as soon as it's available? Would we stipulate that?
I don't, I don't see why not. I mean, it's better for everyone if this, we would love for there to be sewer there.
Absolutely.
So yeah, as a condition of approval, if sewer is brought in front of the property and we could connect, we would connect.
That transition, would that be at the expense of the homeowner, or the expense of the builder?
Well, it's the office building, so it would be the property owner. And they would have to pay connection fee at that point, too. So, first question about the turning radius.
So, we do, in terms of fire, we do have a, we did submit the plans to the fire official, and the fire official approved the plan, the, the previous plans. We did submit the revised plans, which in terms of the circulation is, is better, is not, is not different. But we will get the comments from the fire official. But we did... The radio, the internal radii are six around the, around the landscaped areas, six feet, six foot radii? I'm sorry. The turning radius, we, we follow the Jackson, the Jackson... I'm sorry, let me take a look. Yeah, okay. This is a curb to curb turning radius of a little bit under 40 feet, 39.83 feet. And this was as per the turning template, turning template received from the Jackson Township Fire Official District 4. I'm sorry? Right. So, we, we, we attempt, we are, have attempted to show, and we understand the board needs to look at it more, of what it would look like if there would be access in the rear, and the property would not be utilized as well. That was one thing that we wanted to show, but... And in, in terms of safety, the, the, all, all I would defer to is the fire official saying that the fire, that he did review, and he did say that it is conforming to the fire code. We, we have attempted, we, we... I'm sorry?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I'm a former firefighter, firefighter for decades. You have to have access to the back of the building, okay? We ask nicely, you have to. My suggestion to you, and I think we discussed a way to solve this, is I believe Dr. Tossy's property is next door. We suggested maybe you want to have a conversation about having a connector to this parking lot. If you took this plan and inverted it, turned it over, moved the septic field over, you had a connector, grassy pavers, mountable curb, nothing any better than that. That satisfies Mr. Fleming's request. It's a down and dirty cheap solution to get to where you need to do it. But it's a firefighting thing. And the reason that I'm going to explain it this way is so you completely understand. When one of us pulls up next to the building, we're in a collapse zone. So if something goes wrong, we get squashed, Mr. Fleming loses a piece of apparatus that's a million dollars. Okay? It's not a really, would it be nice? It's doing the right thing. And to solve this is cheaply, quickly satisfy all of our needs here. My suggestion, take this, invert it, do a mountable curb, and you're done.
Into the neighboring property?
Yes.
There is a wall right now between this property and the neighboring property. They did, in order to develop their property, they did put a wall. We certainly could look at it. But right now, the grade is, is, does not match. They did put a wall in, but we certainly could take a look at, and speak.
Well, before we even do that, the applicant is here. He indicates that he spoke to the doctor, saw a doctor on three different occasions to talk about some kind of sharing, whether it be parking, et cetera. And the doctor refuses to do anything. But we could ask a fourth time between now and the next time we go and see if he'd consider it.
Yeah, it, it seems like two sides of the building are inaccessible, right? The right side and the rear, and, you know, you can't have that. That's...
Well, you can't, you, you won't have a full circulation, right? So the question is if you can get back there and then back out, I guess, somehow. You're not going to be able to make a K-turn. Yeah.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, can you articulate again then your argument as to the detriment of this design? Just so that's clear, so when the board has a chance to look at it?
Yes. Okay. The, the submitted plan, the submitted plan provides 35 parking spaces with the building in the rear and the parking in the front. The plan we're showing over here shows, and a 35 space parking, parking lot would be able to, as of right, have a 7,000 square foot building. This plan as shown is 23 spaces, if we would want to have parking, I'm, I'm sorry, have circulation fire around.
Excuse me. 23 spaces and 7,000 square feet?
No, 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 no. I, I, no. The submitted plan was 35 spaces.
So let me, let me lead then. How many square feet of the building is that on that proposed plan?
That, a 23 square foot, 23 spaces would be allowed, 4,600.
How many square feet is the building?
Just said it, but you stopped.
4,600 square feet.
So that plan has a 4,600 square foot footprint, two stories?
No, total square foot.
Total, to...
And, and provides 23 parking spaces?
This provides 20, yes. I, I'd like to clarify, this, the parking spaces provided is 23. This was just meant to be a concept plan, and the building, the footprint is larger than would be, than larger than you would get 4,600. So I just mean that you can have 23 spaces, and you could get max 4,600 total.
Okay, hold on here, because we're getting so confused. So the existing one story footprint of the, the design that you want, that does not have access to the back, how many square feet is that?
The footprint is 3,600 approximately.
3,600. That is the one story?
Yes.
3,600. Now, how many parking places is that?
We have 35 parking spaces.
35. So this concept that you put together, how many square feet is that building in the center?
That building in the center is approximately 3,000 square foot footprint.
3,000 square foot. So it's just slightly smaller.
On the first floor.
On the first floor. And you have only 23 spots?
Correct.
And, and that is, and that means all the turning radiuses and...
Yes.
Obviously, it gives access to the entire building.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, since we're all doing sketches here, as we look at this property, it's about 140 feet wide. So let's just, for argument's sake, as you look at the drawing, let's say we just put one drive aisle on the right hand side, one that's shown on this drawing. one drive aisle on the right-hand side, one that's shown on this drawing. We run it front to back, so that there's access to both, to three sides of the building, and then we put parking rows, or pods, in front of the building and behind the building. It's 140-foot wide, you'd probably get 16 or 18 parking spaces in a pod parallel to North Cooks Bridge Road in front of the building. You get about the same number in the back, so now we're up to 36. We'd have a drive aisle that goes down the right-hand side. You might even be able to squeeze some more parking spaces off of that and maybe get above 40. So the idea here, from a yield perspective, isn't how many square feet, it's how many parking spaces. So if we didn't put aisles around all four sides of the building, we put them around three sides of the building. In this particular case, there'd be an aisle on the right-hand side, and so this would look like, the parking area would look like a reverse C. There'd be an aisle, and then there'd be a pod of parking perpendicular to it with eight spaces, 80 or 90 feet wide, so there'd be eight or nine, so there'd be 16 or 18 spaces in front of the building, 16 or 18 spaces behind the building, and the fire truck could get to three, could get to all four corners of the building. I think that's something similar we did over by the Mavis Discount Auto on North County Line. We put the access aisle on one side, we put parking pods in front and back, and then if we need to, maybe put a gravel path on one side. Now, if they're lucky and they can get a couple of parking spaces along that drive aisle that runs from front to back, they get more yield in terms of building space. So... Yes, not unlike what we did with the office building next to the Mavis Discount Auto on County Line Road. And I think that's not an unreasonable, at least then you'd get a sense of, what's the maximum parking, with still providing reasonable access to four corners of the building? And then instead of putting another drive aisle, maybe that sort of 12-foot one-way emergency route on the fourth side of the building. Does that sound... How many aisles did I lose?
No, I got you. Mr. Chairman, do you understand his suggestion?
I understand the intent.
The intent, and do you think that's...
I will have to lay it out.
Okay. Yes.
I also noticed that on your plans, the second floor is larger than the first floor. So we have to take that into consideration also with the turning radius, because you may need a ladder in there. Right now, the second floor is 4,182, and the first floor is 3,642. So it's a smaller first floor, and overhang is on the second floor. That has to be taken into consideration. Is there a reason that you need that much? The building is too big for that area, it's just too big.
Well, at this point, we're going to be looking at another way of reconfiguring the parking, but the plans did make sure to indicate that, that the square footage of the total first floor and second floor requires, requires 40 spaces, and that we have not provided that. So we did take that, we did calculate that extra square footage. There's no basement, they're... Correct.
Okay. All right, should we open this up to public comment?
That's a whole, that's a whole other plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Does anyone care to comment on this application? Seeing no one, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was a question.
Travis, do you want to sum this up?
Well, we, Mr. Peters made, hopefully, a good suggestion. We have to look at it from an engineering point of view and hope it works. We got your input. The plans may be revised, the architecturals may be revised as a result of that, so I was trying to get from Mr. Halpert how long it will take to go through that so we can get a realistic timeframe to come back. So two, three weeks to get a plan in, and then your professionals and the board needs time to review it.
Thank you for the comments, gentlemen. So, let's see. Hold on a second. September 20th, there's no application?
I don't think, September 20th is first night of circus, so that won't work.
Sorry?
And I'm on vacation that week, hopefully.
Anywhere?
Hopefully, we're going to Napa. Last time we went to Napa, it burned down, so... Right, so we're hoping this time it works.
Okay, so September 20th, then, the very next one is October 4th, which we only have one application, and I think this is going to be pretty simple, correct, when we come back?
We, we hope so.
So to wait. So October 4th, does that sound good with everyone?
What was?
October 4th.
My client was asking if there's any way we can get on August 16th, which would mean everything would have to be in by August 6th, which is...
We already have two applications on for that evening. I don't think it's...
Wait, we just added...
Oh, we just added one. Yeah, four.
Okay. So what did you, what was the final?
October 4th.
Okay, you'll announce without further notice?
Now. Mr. Chairman, members of the public, the applicant, this matter, North Cooks Bridge Road, will be carried to the October 4, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Board without the requirement of further notice. The applicant has waived time.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion to carry this until our October 4 meeting, please?
Motion to carry.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Can I get a motion to close? Is that your second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, everyone, thank you.
It is, I mean, maybe...
For the 26th.
Next week.
Next week.
I got to put a new order on my schedule. I don't know what that means.